Are we? Meeting come to order, please. Thank you. Press your present button, please. Confirm, PJ. Hit it harder. Let the record show PJ's here. Record and roll.
She can't move forward until it's...
Hey. You won the lottery. Record and roll. Announcements, Mike?
Yes, sir. We have a few announcements. The first is that we are nearing completion of the special area plan for the Grassland Village. We have an open house to discuss the final plan scheduled for this Tuesday evening. That's the 14th. That'll be between 6:00 and 7:30 at Grassland Middle School. Second is just kind of FYI, as you all know, you all have considered four different rezoning requests over the past several months. All four of those have been scheduled to be considered by the County Commission at the meeting this Monday night. Unfortunately, there were some errors made in the notice for that public hearing, and as a result, those rezoning requests will be heard by the County Commission in February, and we're in the process of redoing the advertisement for that meeting. There's also a withdrawal on tonight's agenda. That's item 13. That was a concept plan for cottages of Ensworth. Again, that has been withdrawn. And then finally, there's a revised report in front of you for item five this evening. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
December 12, 13. Any corrections? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record the vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Any old business, staff? Joe?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Mike? Consideration of the consent agenda, items three through nine and including item 14. Anyone on the commission wishing to hear any one of those agenda items as a separate issue, please say so now, otherwise we'll take it as a whole. Anyone? None? Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with item three. Arrington Vineyard Rural Retreat Performance Bond for Landscaping, $72,100. Recommendation: Convert to maintenance amount of $28,000 and extend for a period of six months. Item four, Arrington Vineyard Retreat Rural Retreat Performance Bond for Wastewater Treatment Disposal System, $72,750. Recommendation: Convert to maintenance amount of $21,825 and extend for a period of two years. Item five, Hopewell Ridge Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control, $60,000. Recommendation: Extend current amount for a period of six months, and also request that a schedule for the placement of the asphalt surface mix be received prior to the next review of the bond, and that the asphalt surface be placed prior to October of 2014. Item 16, Silverstream Farms, Section 8, Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control, $40,000. recommendation: Extend current amount for a period of three months, and order to obtain the proper approvals from both the Williamson County Highway Commission and Williamson County Commission prior to release of the bond. Item seven, Stags Leap, Section 3B, Performance Bond for Wastewater Collection System, $66,300. Recommendation: Convert to maintenance in the amount of $19,890 and extend for a period of two years. Item eight, Stags Leap, Section 3B, Performance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control, $379,000. Recommendation: Extend current amount for a period of six months. Item nine, Stags Leap, Section 3B, Performance Bond for Water, $135,000. Recommendation: Reduce the amount of $13,500 and extend for a period of one year. And dropping down to item 14. Final Plat Review for Arrington Retreats, Section 3, containing 30 lots and 16.92 acres located off Nolansville Road in the 5th Voting District. Staff recommends approval with the following stipulations. One, posting a performance bond in the amount of $301,000 for roads drainage and erosion control. This is a reduced performance amount based on work completed. Two, posting a performance bond amount of $10,000 for water improvements as specified by Nolansville College Grove Utility District. Three, posting a performance bond amount of $107,500 for wastewater collection system. Four, the approved HOA documents must be recorded at the same time of recording of the final plat. Five, execution of stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And six, that the applicant provide two copies of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordinate System prior to the signature and recording of the final plat.
Thank you, sir. Questions of consent? On to consent. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record the vote. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Presentation of agenda items, excuse me. The next three agenda items, 10, 11, and 12 are public hearings. Those of you in the audience, our procedures are as follows. As that agenda item is presented, you will be invited to come to the podium. If you would at that time, give us your name and address. We would appreciate it. First agenda is, item is number 10, Amendments to the 2013 Williamson County Zoning Ordinance to Correct Various Topographical Errors and Other Minor Errors. Staff?
On May 14th, the Board of County Commissioners adopted the update to the zoning ordinance, an official zoning map, and established an effective date of January 1st, 2013. While administering the zoning ordinance, staff noted a number of typographical errors and other minor errors. The proposed amendments aim to clean up those errors, are summarized on Attachment 10-1, and are shown in red on Attachment 10-2. Staff recommends approval of these amendments. Staff also recommends that the attached resolution be forwarded to the County Commission for adoption.
Questions, staff? Public hearing, I'm sorry, skipped it. Anyone? This is exciting stuff, folks. Join right in. Last call. We close the public hearing on this agenda item. Questions of staff? Comments? Motion? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Motion carries. Public hearing continuing. Agenda item 11, Amendment to Section 1705 of the 2013 Williamson County Zoning Ordinance Regarding Rural Retreat Parking Uses. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since the adoption of the rezoning ordinance in 2012, staff has been approached by a number of individuals interested in developing rural retreats, both limited and extensive. In several instances, concerns have been raised regarding the required surfacing of the parking areas. Section 1705b 3 of the zoning ordinance stipulates that the surfacing for access drives, off-street parking, loading and drive-through areas be asphalt, concrete, brick, stone, or pavers. Certain uses such as single-family dwellings, agricultural uses, temporary uses, and uses considered in areas consisting of three or fewer spaces are exempted from this requirement. Rural retreats are something of a hybrid land use characterized by large land areas intend toward event venues for weddings, corporate retreats, and the like. Required off-street parking is based on the size of the facility and potential number of attendees. The general standards for parking area surfacing were imposed on this class of land use, perhaps without accounting for the aesthetic impact this would have, that this type of surfacing may have on the class of land uses that by their nomenclature would infer a rural setting. This incongruence has been pointed out by several applicants. The proposed amendment would exempt rural retreat uses from the surfacing requirement. However, the surfaced area would be required for spaces dedicated to handicapped accessible parking at the current ratio established by ADA for the same. This amendment would not preclude an applicant from providing a surface parking area, rather would offer the applicant the option determined what might work better for their enterprise while serving the legitimate concern that handicapped accessible parking is available on a surfaced area. Finally, the proposed amendment provides some incentive to minimize the amount of land dedicated to surface parking, thus serving the site both aesthetically and environmentally. Staff recommends that the attached resolution be forwarded to County Board of Commissioners with a recommendation for its adoption.
Thank you, sir. We'll open the public hearing on this agenda item this time. If you wish to make a comment, you're welcome to do so now. Commissar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Steve Smith, Williamson County Commissioner, 12th District, 404 Chatsworth Court, Franklin. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in support of this amendment, and while it is not venue-specific, it is helpful to a venue that I represent. And I want to thank the staff for their time and effort in reviewing this. With so many opportunities for events and so many venues in the county, it's difficult to come up with a blanket, all-inclusive land use designation, but I think they've done an excellent job in trying to arrive at a pragmatic solution to this situation. So I ask for your support. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Michael Kelly. I live at 2030 Cedarmont, Cedarmont, the old Cedarmont property. And I guess just everything he said...
Good speech.
I would agree with you. Yeah, it was great. I wish I could do that. We own Cedarmont, and my daughter is interested in developing it. And by making this change, two things happen. One, I think you've done a lot to preserve the environment because we're not being forced to pave over property that we would normally have to pave over for these parking restrictions. And secondly, you're giving us an opportunity to develop a business that will be beneficial to all parties. So like he said, we deeply appreciate the time you've spent on this, Tom Joe's spend and the rest of the staff's spend looking into this. The engineer that was, I think, with Joe on the trip looked at it as well, and so we just want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Public hearing still open. Last call. No one? We'll close the public hearing this time. Thank you. Questions of staff? Comments? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? I hear none. Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Continuing public hearings, agenda item 12, Amendment to the 2013 Official Zoning Maps Regarding the Following Tax Map Parcels and Zoning District. To Rezone for Rural Preservation RP1 to Rural Preservation RP5, Tax Map 51, Parcels 12.02, 12.03, 12.05, 12.06, 12.07, 12.08, 12.09, 12.10, 12.12, 12.14, 12.17, 12.20, and 12.21. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicants have requested a map amendment in order to rezone 13 lots in the Two Rivers subdivision, which is located off Del Rio Pike, from their present zoning of Rural Preservation 1 to Rural Preservation 5. A petition making this request has been received from the owners of each of these 13 parcels. It should be noted that there are six parcels in the subdivision constituting approximately 32% of the total number of lots in the subdivision for which petitions have not been received. The chief distinction between the existing zoning district and the proposed zoning district relates to the density of residential development allowed, which is as follows. Rural Preservation 1 is one dwelling unit per acre; Rural Preservation 5, one dwelling unit per five acres. Essentially, these property owners have requested a downzoning of their properties in that the requested zoning district is more restrictive than the existing zoning district from the standpoint of allowable residential density. The lots in the subdivision are all greater than five acres in size. Section 4.05 of the zoning ordinance provides some guidance in such matters by outlining a number of factors that should be considered when evaluating a request for a map amendment. Staff believes that a number of these factors may be viewed as supporting this request. One of the key factors that should be considered is the extent to which a proposed map amendment is consistent with the county's comprehensive land use plan. Staff does not believe the existing zoning in this area is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. However, an argument can also be made that the requested zoning is not inconsistent with the overall goals and policies of the plan. As you will recall, the owners of approximately 40 parcels along Old Hillsborough Road and Del Rio Pike have recently made similar requests to downzone their properties, and the Planning Commission has recommended approval of those requests. Staff also recommended approval of those requests despite the fact that approval of those petitions would result in a less-than-homogenous zoning pattern, as not every property owner along those roadway segments joined the requests. Those previous requests involved individual independent properties that are not part of a residential subdivision and therefore are not subject to a set of covenants that privately restrict the type or density of development that may occur. In this case, however, staff has some concerns about rezoning only a portion of a platted residential subdivision, particularly one in which private covenants already serve to prevent any future subdivision of lots within the subdivision. Until such time as the remaining lot owners also request this downzoning, staff cannot recommend approval. Accordingly, staff recommends that action on this item be deferred until the February meeting to give the remaining lot owners an opportunity to join this request. If this body is inclined to recommend approval of this map amendment, it should also forward the attached resolution to the County Commission for its consideration. One additional note, Mr. Chairman, that is that a third map is in front of you. We thought this would be helpful in simply illustrating the location of these properties in relation to those other 40 parcels that you all have recommended recently.
Thank you, sir. Is that all, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We'll open the public hearing at this time. If you wish to make a comment, you're welcome to do so now.
Thank you, Commission. Name Kurt Barton. Address is 4219 Two Rivers Lane. I represent a number of the members of the Two Rivers subdivision. I'm a board member on the homeowners association there. A couple of facts that I think that would be helpful to understand our request. First, I want to make sure that it's understood that our efforts here are to just help support the volunteer efforts to downzone to RP5 to help preserve the rural preservation of that area. We believe in support of the land use plan. Historically, Two Rivers subdivision, seven or eight years ago when developed, while it was under a one-acre requirement, the development was established, and all of the owners joined and purchased their property with an understanding that we already have a five-acre minimum for our homeowners association. So while this request by our 13 property owners is not a significant change to us because we already mandate a minimum of five acres, we think it's significant to the area around to help support, preserve the ruralness of that nature. Everybody that lives in Two Rivers subdivision is proud of our subdivision. We think it's a model subdivision, and we believe it supports the land use plan. We want to continue to preserve the rural nature there. We don't think it's necessary to defer the decision to approve our petition. The reasons we don't think it's necessary, and we would request your approval, are as such. First, we submitted 13 of the 19 property owners' petitions signed. I also have one additional signature of a property owner with us today, so we have 14 of the 19. Also note that three of those missing signatures are for property owners that do not live and have not built in the subdivision. They're not local, and it's very difficult for us to get them to sign that. Secondly, I would say that as our covenant rules allow, we govern our homeowners association with a requirement that two-thirds of a majority vote allows us for amendments within our covenants. While we're not asking for an amendment to our covenant, we use that as an illustration that in our internal homeowners association, we allow for two-thirds vote, of which 14 of 19 is more than two-thirds vote, it's approximately close to three-fourths vote, is able to represent, able to mandate change in our homeowners association. So we would ask that the commission would consider rezoning the entire subdivision as we feel that we've got the necessary representation for our homeowners association. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll ask you to come. We're going to get somebody else, I guess.
I think you're going to have another one after me. Todd Kestner, Commissioner for the 9th District. Live across the street from Two Rivers. And I would recommend that you support this proposal, item number 12. You know, all zoning language, every bit of it is restrictive. And, you know, we know that, and zoning exists to create a common good. It's almost never, ever unanimous. And here you have 73.7% of a group of property owners asking for something. I don't know at what point in each of your minds it becomes compelling. You know, 50/50 is not a majority. Two-thirds is. This is 74% virtually. I do believe, and I note, you know, Mike's comments, that you don't believe that the existing zoning is out of compliance with the land use plan, and I understand that, and I've read the land use plan, and I see where it says sections that talk about not reducing zoning density that existed in 1975 or whenever it was that it was passed. But when you read that whole document as a whole document, and you look at the maps and how they color the green area that's rural preservation, it's not a black-and-white either-or. This whole area of the county is called to be rural preservation. You've heard me say before that I don't think rural preservation and one-acre lots go together very well. You know, we stand by that view. I do understand that it is in compliance with the land use plan, RP1, but certainly it's not in compliance with the theme of the overarching documents. We would recommend that you honor the wishes of 74% of the property owners, and you support item number 12. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I'm Dory Bowles, the Director of the Harpeth River Watershed Association. I live at 201 Deerfield Lane. I'll just speak just briefly about process. If you recall, we originally had a resolution for all the property owners along Del Rio and Old Hillsborough Road, and we ended up doing it in three parts based on timing of signatures. And after you approved each one, they were held until all of them went through the system, through the Planning Commission, before it went to County Commission. Basically, the same thing could be done here. Instead of deferring, these could be approved tonight, and they can be then held until the rest come through, or there's an initiation to rezone the rest, and then they can all go to County Commission together. But essentially, Two Rivers is part of the rural preservation zone, and even though the subdivision already clarifies it's already platted, it actually, the correct zoning then that goes with the plat is actually Rural Preservation 5. Thank you very much.
I didn't bring these documents here. I got them back tonight. Mary Brockman, 1407 Old Hillsborough Road, County Commissioner, District 9. When this all started in this area, there was this incredibly strong belief, a core value, that Rural Preservation 5 was the designation for this district. And the only reason that Two Rivers wasn't initiated in the beginning was because staff had explained, well, it's already platted, it already has the five. But these landowners have come in now to say, we want to be part of the RP5 district. I truly believe we need to support, you know, their petitions. I believe that we can go forward and get more. But tonight, let's approve what is on and before you, because this is in keeping and contiguous with this area, and it represents the ethic of this community. It's kind of ironic, because this area was slated for a one-acre subdivision, and I'd call him an angel investor, came in, said, I don't want to see this kind of density happen, purchased the community. The development pattern was set at five acres plus for each dwelling, and now we have this large lot subdivision that completely fits into the character of this area. So even though they have covenants, they want to be part of this. They want to be part of the Rural Preservation 5 district, which is so delineated. We have time to get the rest in. We can do that. It's, in fact, it's interesting. Some of the ones initially on Old Hillsborough said, I'm not interested in signing a petition, but I would not be averse for the county to initiate rezoning to RP5. So let's take that in consideration here and do what's best. We go out of our way to make sure that the development patterns are agreed to and met. So let's make sure that we're doing something that these property owners have requested. It's not out of line, and I really hope you'll go forward with this, and then we'll get it all done and set, and it will be the right thing to do. It is, it is right. Yes, sir.
I'm saying you're trying to figure out, we've got a subdivision which is different than what we did on Hillsborough Road that has covenants that prohibits one-acre lots. You have a phosphate mine area that cannot be developed in one-acre lots. What are we accomplishing?
It's just on the map. It gives you that zoning that people want to be adhered to.
I'll ask you again. What are we accomplishing?
Well, who's to know in the future? This zoning fits what RP5 is across the street and all around them.
Well, I mean, what can happen in the future that would be different? I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Who's to know? I mean, I just, you know, you say you have a variance, you have someone come in, and they don't want to agree to the covenants. I don't know.
You can't do one-acre lots.
Yeah, you can on some of them. You're doing it on the Lynch property right now.
But covenants prohibited in the subdivision.
Can I join?
Yeah.
You know, two-thirds of the residents could amend the covenants and change the covenants. And all this is doing is it's bringing this part of the county in conformity with what the big green painted area on the land use plan map shows. So it's really...
It's already in conformity.
You might call it belts and suspenders, and perhaps it is, but it is...
Well, it's already in conformity, so I'm trying to figure out why you want to do this, other than to have RP5, RP1 on your forehead, you've got RP5.
Because it's not the underlying zoning for this parcel, RP1.
It doesn't matter.
Well, it could matter in the future, sir. I agree with you. Right now, you're correct. Right now, it doesn't matter.
How could it matter? Tell me how it could matter.
I just think theoretically, they just, the community believes that this subdivision represents what RP5...
Is it a security blanket? Is that, I mean...
Well, you can call it that, John, but I'm saying it's why it was initiated to begin with.
Mary, I'm trying my best to figure out how to support this, and I'm having a hard time. That's why I'm asking you. If there's some reason for doing it other than being designated RP1 or 5, I don't know what it is, and I guess that's what I'm asking.
Well, is there some reason not to do it, sir? I mean, I think...
As a precedent, yes, sir. In subdivisions, yes, there is a reason not to do it in piecemeal in a subdivision. It is not good planning to have a subdivision with two different zoning districts in it.
Well, I could say the same about going up and down Old Hillsborough Road or any other county. I mean, I hear you.
I mean, you've got that change all over the place, so it just, like I said, I think...
We don't have subdivisions anywhere that have two zoning districts.
But you could well have a subdivision here that has all RP5 once this thing is settled. So that's the goal. The goal is to have it all RP5, and I will continue to work on it until we make it happen.
Let's go for that goal. I agree with you.
That's the goal. Absolutely. I understand that.
We think this is a good first step towards achieving that goal.
That's what we're saying.
That's what we're both for.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Anyone else? Discussion? Comments? I'm sorry. Oh, yes, the public hearing's closed. I'm sorry. Holly?
Mike, what effort has gone into notifying the property owners that haven't responded? Has the county notified the property letters through certified mail?
We have. We sent letters to property owners who are part of this request, as well as the adjoining property owners.
Okay. Have we, and we've just not received any response, were they certified mail to where we know that they were properly notified?
They weren't sent certified, but we've not heard from anybody. We've also posted the properties out there.
Right, but if you don't live out there and you're an absentee owner, you wouldn't necessarily... I guess the problem I have is you've got four or five property owners that, you know, we're going to unilaterally change zoning, and I would like to, you know, I would feel more comfortable if they either, yes, we agree with it, or at least no, and gave their reasons why, instead of just... And then, you know, and if we did defer it to February and we still didn't hear from anybody, that doesn't mean we couldn't, you know, pass it in February if we deferred it. I just feel a little uncomfortable. I just feel a little uncomfortable doing it without having a definite yes or no, I guess, from the property owners.
Tommy?
Thank you, John. Like yourself, listening to the dialogue just a few minutes ago, because that was my question too, John, is the why. You have restricted covenants that limits you to, you know, five-acre lots. So what we're accomplishing, you know, and I'm still not convinced we're doing, accomplishing anything other than, like I said, stamping that RP5 and just bringing it into conformity with what they're trying to accomplish out there, which is, you know, well and good, but like yourself, I have some issues about a subdivision being split up into two different zones. I just have a real issue with that. I think that's a bad precedence for us to set, and that's right now. Until at least we hear from the other property owners, you know, I'm not going to be able to support this.
Let's make sure it's clear. The properties that on the map are not colored in, they're not subject to the request. So maybe I misunderstood Holly's question, but we notify the property owners that requested it of the meeting, and then we notify the adjacent property owners.
That would be the ones that are not in also, though.
Yeah, so they receive the notice as adjacent property owners, but that's not subject to the rezoning request now, so that would not be part of the request this evening. That's not what you're acting upon. As far as them being contacted for whether they want to join this in or not, the county did not spearhead that aspect of it. That was done by the residents out there, and then it was brought to the county. So the notice consisted of, "There's a rezoning, public hearing," but it wasn't any contact as far as, "Are you good with this or not?" I just want to make sure that's clear, what the actual request is and what the county's notification role was.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Then I have a question based on that. Then did the homeowners' association? I mean, since I guess they're the ones that are spearheading. I just have an issue with changing a zoning when you have property owners that are not... Maybe I'm misunderstanding what we're voting on, but they don't know that this is subject to being...
And they're not in the request.
They're not in the request.
The ones, the only ones that are in the request are ones that we, like the other ones we received, we received petitions from them requesting this. So if the property owner did not request it themselves, they're not in the action for this evening. So it's the six parcels that, and I believe the gentleman from the HOA said he brought one of them with him tonight, that maybe they've not been able to get in touch with because they're out of town, that some of them are empty parcels. But as far as the action that you're being asked to take tonight, it's only on the parcels that we physically received petitions requesting it.
Okay.
Clear? Done.
My question is, if we voted for this, until it goes to the County Commission, it's not approved, and are we being asked to hold this until the commission approves, until they all come together before it goes to the County Commission? Or are we just asking to put this off our vote for...
I think that's what the request was, that we repackage it as they dribble in. Is that...
That's...
Is that correct, Mary?
We would like you to go ahead and initiate these now with the intent that, just like the other ones, they have it gone to the County Commission for final approval. There's a very good chance that more will come, and it just stops this from going on and on and on. We can get there. I don't believe we can, but it's just a matter of, "Let's get these approved by this body tonight." That's my thought.
Okay. That's what, I think that's what Mr. Crowhan was asking, and I think you answered that. Tommy?
John, the restrictive covenants, Mary, as I understand it, they're in place, and I don't see anything happening out there in the next month that I think that what the homeowners' association would come in and change things in such a radical way that, you know, what you're trying to accomplish, you know, it would be detrimental. You know, would deferring a month really hurt this process? Because I don't see it, convince me, deferring a month is going to hurt.
Let's go through this all over again. Let's go ahead and issue the voluntary petition before we deny it.
Well, you know, I have a problem with a subdivision that's split up like that, okay? And I would like, you know, for that subdivision to come together and try to make it one, you know, rezoning request for all the parcels in there. And, you know, I feel maybe, you know, let's give them another month to work through that, and then bring it back, and then we'll see. I would be in a better position to support it a month from now. Let me say that.
What if they get all of the points?
Well, we're... Well, we're just...
You know, love and charity, you know, go ahead.
Well, I guess we'll just have to cross that creek when we come to it, but again, with the restrictive covenants in there, I don't see if you never change the rezoning in there, you're going to have a problem unless the homeowners' association come in and change that. So again, I don't see why we got this pressing issue to, you know, make this change at this point in time, so...
Pass it and pocket it, waiting on the balance either. Counsel?
Your action is just recommending that the County Commission, depending on how you vote, take an action. And so then it's up to the county commissioners to sponsor, which in the past has been Commissioners Brockman and Kessler, to sponsor the resolution. And so, once you're, once you've taken your action, then it's up to the county commissioners to file it.
No.
So if they choose to hold on to it for a month or two, that's within their power to do so.
It's not within ours, though.
No. Once you take your action on it, then it's...
That's my point.
Okay.
Okay. Done?
Could, would it be within our power to approve this contingent on the approval of the others?
Nope.
No? Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Pratt. Good to see you, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'm really confused. We have a subdivision that has nineteen subdivided lots in it.
Yeah.
It has an HOA document that governs their rule, correct? And you cannot split a lot in this subdivision according to the HOA document.
That's correct.
So what are we discussing?
You're late on that question.
No, I'm really, honestly, when you walk into a subdivision, you sign your document, you're saying, "I'm buying a five-acre lot, and I'm not going to subdivide it."
That's correct.
And we've got thirteen out of nineteen lots that say, "Hey, I want to make sure we have a five-acre lot." Well, those other six could make it a one-acre lot if they wanted to.
No.
Yeah.
Other questions? Comments? Pete?
Good sign of it, John.
Okay.
Ms. Brockman told us people aren't going to have to ask this over and over again. We spent three years setting the zone on it, and we spent the last two years changing the zone on it, so if we get through it and don't have to do it no more, we won't have this to do it anymore.
Well, contrary to Ms. Brockman, we will have to have another public hearing and do this again, if you bring in three more, two more, one more, whatever. So it's, it does, it's, we'll have to do it again, if that's, if that's what they want to do. I mean, that's the long and the short of it. Any other...
But just real clear, we're talking about this nineteen lots. We're not talking about people who touch them. We're just talking about these nineteen lots.
That's correct. This whole subdivision.
Yeah.
Well, there's thirteen in there...
Thirteen that said, "I want to do it," and the other six that you took a hook of, or...
Thirteen is only what you're acting on.
All right. Okay. Other comments? They had said that they had a fourteenth petition. Would that be included in this? No. Not, so that's just here and there. I don't need agenda. Anything else? Anyone else? Raise your hand. My boardkeeper is gone. Motion?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Holly.
So we're back to supporting what staff is recommending on the deferral? Are we, that's what we're...
We don't have a motion on the floor, Holly. I don't know why we're supporting it.
Okay. Okay. Well, that's, okay.
You want to make a motion? Anyone?
I'm making a motion for it. For a month.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Deferral to February.
Till the February meeting.
First class recommendations.
I'm sorry?
First class recommendations. February.
Well, it doesn't need to say that. That's what they said. Defer it till February meeting.
He's fine.
Is your motion?
He's fine.
Is there a second?
No.
Holly, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Now, here and on, prepare to vote. Punch it again, Holly. Record the vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item thirteen is withdrawn. Agenda item fourteen was on consent. Agenda item fifteen on the final plats, revised final plant review for Falls Grove, Section 1, aka Ends of the Grove, containing ninety-nine lots on one hundred eighty-seven point one four acres located off U. Daley Covington Road in the fifth voting district. Staff?
A final plat for this development was approved at the October 2007 meeting. The development is now under new ownership, and the new owners wish to change the name of the subdivision from Ends of the Cove to Falls Grove, as well as to change the name of the streets within this section of the development. Section 5.1.6 of the subdivision regulations specifies that the Planning Commission shall have final authority for the naming of subdivisions, and Section 5.3.1i of the subdivision regulations states that the Planning Commission shall approve the names of all roads shown on the final plat. Accordingly, the applicant is requesting a revised final plat in order to make these changes. The county's emergency management department has approved the requested name changes, and applicable letters of credit and performance slash maintenance agreements have been reposted by the new owners. Staff recommends approval of this revised final plat with the stipulation that the applicant provide two copies of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plane Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Questions, staff? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Yes, sir. Has been built, or is there anything going on now? Just... No.
There will be.
There's nothing there now, though. Okay. Okay. That's what I thought. Anything else? Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item sixteen, under other business, vacate plat for Cascade Estates located off Lewisburg Pike, the second voting district. Staff?
A final plat for Section 1 of Cascade Estates, which included fourteen lots, was approved at the March 2008 meeting. The applicant does not wish to proceed with the development at this time and is seeking to vacate the final plat. Section 1.13 of the subdivision regulations specifies that in order to vacate a final plat, an instrument must be approved by the Planning Commission in like manner as plats of subdivision. Accordingly, the applicant is requesting approval of a revised plat which vacates the previous final plat. Upon recordation of this plat, the letters of credit on file for this development may be released. No lots have been sold in this development, and no other final plats have been recorded. Staff recommends approval of this request.
Motion?
Move approval of staff recommendations.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record the vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Any other business? Motion to adjourn. We are out of here.